Thanks, John. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 12th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can I roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Okay, next we'll go to approval of the minutes from the November 28th minutes and the October 10th and November 14th workshop minutes.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $3,390,578.44, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
First and second on bills, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go into public comments. Uh, just be chance for anybody in the audience to come up and talk. If you want to talk about the digester, you can wait till we get to the digester because that's its public hearing on by itself, so you don't have to stand up right now. Um, and when we do get to that, it'll be two minutes for everybody. Um, so if there's anybody else that has anything besides the digester, now would be the time to stand up.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dana Linska, and I once again appear before you on behalf of the most destitute residents of River Falls. Last summer, you passed a no camping ordinance that's essentially aimed at preventing people from sleeping unless they can afford to have a roof over their heads. Um, it was, it was supposed to be applied to recreational camping, but it's only been applied to River Falls homeless population so far. And worse yet, it's being misapplied. It only applies to property, public property the city owns or rents. It's very specific about that. But the River Falls Police Department is applying it in cases where it's not applicable. Uh, this is a cruel thing to do to people that are destitute, uh, need a place to sleep. Sometimes they're just trying to get some sleep in their car so they can get to work the next day. Um, but that's not the biggest problem. Biggest problem is you've, you've put the Chief of Police, uh, Mr. Chief Young, in charge of this, and, uh, he's, um, acting in an incredibly unprofessional manner in administering it, um, and in refusing to discuss it and ordering his officers to not discuss it with anybody also. Anybody but the chief were to act in that way violating the, the, um, plea, the RFPD's own rules, they'd be disciplined. Only one person can discipline the chief, and that's Mayor Tolent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Mayor.
Yep.
I just wanted to do a quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't think anybody, I think everybody else is here for the digester.
So being that it's the holiday season, I just wanted to, um, on the record, remind folks that this is a really tough time for lots of people, and so wanted to give, um, national and local numbers for mental health resources for those that may need it. Um, nationally, you can text 741-741, and you text the word home, and a mental health professional will, uh, respond. Calling 988 is another way in which to have a trained mental health response. Here in Pierce County, you can get immediate, um, uh, assistance 24 hours a day at 888-552-6642. And in St. Croix County, you can call for non-emergencies, 715-246-8255. And again, for both counties, call 911 if it is an emergency, but just wanted to remind folks that there are lots of resources out there, um, to take advantage of that and to seek out, um, help and assistance if you are, um, in a time of crisis. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else got anything? Okay. Um, so there's a little bit of a change in the agenda. We have to do, um, for the ordinance rezoning city-owned property land, we have to move over to the resolution, which is 2A, and then we'll come back to 2. So 2A is a resolution approving the final plat for Man Valley Corporate Park. Uh, this resolution would approve the final plat for Man Valley Corporate Park. So I'll take a motion on this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions on this? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go back here, and, uh, this will be ordinance 2023-15. This is an ordinance rezon in certain city-owned lands in the Man Valley Corporate Park to Corporate Park District and Conservancy Districts. Um, so we'll move into a public hearing. We'll close the council hearing, move off the public hearing for this. If anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2023-15.
Second.
First and second, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we don't, no.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. Uh, could I ask again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinance 2023-15. This is an ordinance rezon in city-owned lands in the Man Valley Corporate Park. Wait a minute, we just, we just did that. Oh, I'm sorry. That's my bad. Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, close the council hearing and open up the public hearing on resolution approving a special use permit for unique farming. This is for the anaerobic diget, digester facility at, uh, W-10322, Highway 29. So this is where everybody can talk if they want to. So there's no, whoever wants to come up first?
Presentation.
Yep, let's do that first. Emily's gonna give us a little presentation first, and she might answer some questions with her presentation. Forgot about that.
Well, good evening. I'm Emily Shively. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development for the city of River Falls. An application for a special use permit for unique farming in the A1 Exclusive Agricultural District in the city of River Falls Extraterritorial Zoning Area has been submitted by Vanguard Renewables in cooperation with Peterson Family Real Estate to operate an anaerobic digester facility at W-10322, Highway 29, in the town of River Falls. The proposed facility would be located on the parcel immediately north of the Augustine Peterson Dairy Farm, adjacent to the sand extraction area. The extraterritorial zoning area is an area located in close proximity to but outside of city boundaries. The city has land use authority in this area to ensure orderly growth and development of the community and efficient extension of infrastructure. In this area, the city and town share some responsibilities with regard to certain regulations pertaining to development. For this proposal, the town of River Falls was the first to review the request at a meeting held on July 10th, 2023, and they approved a conditional use permit for the use, subject to conditions. The conditional use permit approved by the town of River Falls contains provisions that outline the general requirements of the permit, address off-site impacts and groundwater quality, establishes inspection enforcement procedures and penalties, and provides a timeline for the regular review of the conditional use permit to ensure compliance with the conditions of that permit. The town board unanimously approved the conditional use permit and forwarded their recommendation to the Extraterritorial Zoning Committee. The Extraterritorial Zoning Committee is comprised of three members from the town and three members of the City Plan Commission. They met and held a public hearing on November 27th and unanimously forwarded a special use permit resolution to the city council with a favorable recommendation. That resolu, resolution is now before the city council this evening. Now I will discuss the specifics of the proposal. The proposed facility would combine manure from the farm operations with organic food waste brought to the facility from food producers, restaurants, grocery stores, and other uses that generate organic food waste. Some of the material would be brought to the facility, ready to incorporate into the digester, and some material would be depackaged at the facility. The anaerobic digester process creates biogas for use as an energy product, a dry waste product that may be used as compost or animal bedding, and liquid fertilizer that may be applied to cropland in accordance with nutrient management guidelines. The applicant is proposing the construction of the anaerobic digester facility on up to 11 acres adjacent to the north side of the Peterson, um, dairy farm operation. The anaerobic digester facility is anticipated to have eight to 10 full-time employees working on site Monday through Saturday. The applicant has stated that delivery of the food waste material will occur between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM daily, excluding Sundays. The applicant has stated that deliveries will not be permitted when staff is not on site, and the facility will be monitored remotely to ensure safe and compliant operations when staff are not present. The applicant has estimated that there will be approximately 20 to 25 trucks per day entering and exiting the site via an improved access drive from County Highway Double F, immediately west of the River Falls Dog Park. The primary access via Double F is preferred by the Peterson family in order to minimize disturbance to the farm's existing operations. The ordinance outlines 10 criteria to be considered in the granting of a special use permit in the Exclusive Agriculture Zoning District. The applicant has provided their responses as to how the criteria are met with their proposal, and those may be found in the packet. Staff review of the application against the criteria has found that the proposal meets the criteria in the ordinance, subject to conditions. Special use permits need to be granted if the applicant can meet or agrees to meet the conditions in the ordinance, which must be reasonable and to the extent practicable, measurable. Conditions must also be related to the purpose of the ordinance and based on substantial evidence. There are eight conditions recommended for this special use permit. One is that the term of the special use permit runs consecutively with the contract term between Vanguard and the Peterson family. If they terminate their agreement, the special use permit is terminated as well. Another condition is that if approved, the special use permit shall terminate upon revocation of the town-issued conditional use permit. The town of River Falls will be responsible for enforcing the terms of the conditional use permit they have issued, and the city of River Falls will be responsible for enforcing the terms of the city-issued special use permit. As noted earlier, the conditional use permit issued by the town of River Falls addresses operational controls, monitoring, and potential nuisance conditions. Conditions 3, 4, and 5 limit the intensity of the digester operation to what the applicant has submitted. Any enlargement of the site or increase in truck traffic would require an amendment to the special use permit, which would require review by the ETZ Committee and approval by a city council. Conditions 6 and 7 require paving of the access road adjacent to the Dog Park to minimize dust or mud adjacent to the park. And then finally, Condition 8 allows the city to monitor groundwater in the area. So as I mentioned earlier, the Extraterritorial Zoning Committee held a public hearing on November 27th, 2023. The Extraterritorial Zoning Committee unanimously forwarded the special use permit resolution to the city council with a favorable recommendation. The ordinance states that the city council shall take action on the Extraterritorial Zoning Committee recommendation without revisions. State law specifies that special use permits shall be granted if the applicant can meet or agrees to meet the conditions in the ordinance. Denial of a special use permit would need to be based on a finding that the applicant has not provided substantial evidence that the requirements of the ordinance cannot or won't be satisfied. Decisions to deny a special use permit must also be based on substantial evidence. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, so now's the time, if anybody wants to come up and talk about this, now would be the time. Make sure you, make sure you've signed in.
Yeah, I'll sign in. So thank you so much for listening to my concern.
So like, like, just, I'm sorry, just remind, just remind everybody to, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, cut me off if I go too long.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, Stephen Meads. Uh, I live on W-11230 of County Road FF. Uh, as I came and talked on the 27th of November as well, my primary concern with the proposal is the increased truck traffic on our road. Uh, there is a small hollow, and that's to the east. That hollow does not have sidewalks. Children bike home from work through that hollow up into Birch Cliff neighborhood. It's, I've almost had people going down through that hollow daily. I bike through that hollow when I bike to work. I have major concerns about truck traffic coming through that, that passway. Um, I live further up. If you're coming from the other side, we have the S-curve. I've seen a number of pretty terrible accidents on the road. I've had animals hit on that road. My kids play on that road. I live next to two preserves that are nature preserves, and I worry about the, uh, 60 trucks that will come by. Uh, it's 30 trucks, limited to, but that's to and from. I don't distinguish the difference between the truck coming and going. Um, as well as that, I kinda did some math in my head this morning, and it sounds like there could potentially be a semi truck coming past my house every 10 minutes if you're doing a 10-hour day or 8-hour day, uh, Monday through Saturday. So that's my primary concern, is that that, that's a rustic road. It's beautiful. People live on that road for a very specific reason, and to have that amount of truck traffic coming down that road is disappointing. Um, if the Petersons have access that they could put off of 29, it seems like a much, much more common sense way to do it. It's an underutilized highway. It's got a 30-year lifespan, I think, as somebody had mentioned previously on the 27th. I don't understand why if they want to build this digester, they can't take on the additional costs of running that road through their property, um, in their backyard instead of off Double F. Uh, I was a little bit surprised there wasn't more people here on the 27th from the Birch Cliff neighborhood who would be concerned about property values. There were some things I wasn't aware of, a stack that, that burns off methane flames. I don't know what the, how often that happens, but I'd be interested in knowing that. So all around, um, I'm not in support of the proposal. There's enough traffic on Double F as it is, um, and I just, I feel very strongly that this would be a, um, a move that would decrease my property value and my, my quality of life and when that person has the opportunity to build their property. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I'm Mark Anderson. I live in 2327 Greenwood Valley Drive. That's at the corner of Greenwood Valley Drive and Double F. I was kind of put off that, uh, the people in Birch Cliff and along Double F were not informed about this. And to break it down simply, it looks like the Petersons wanna push off a little inconvenience for them to inconvenience for a whole lot of other people. And if you can't table it, or if you cannot adjust it, would you please vote it down so it can be resubmitted after some more public input on it and maybe get them to come off of 29 rather than bring everything down Double F? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dick Reinhardt, 346 Steelhead Drive, uh, South Point. I, uh, wanna ditto what was said before. Thing I'd like to add is, um, the digester is a fantastic idea. It is a wonderful thing for manure and waste, but as well as this presentation was prepared, and I've read it twice, and it's lengthy, and I'm a slow reader, uh, they did everything literally, I think, as well as they could possibly do it, except on how they're going to get the product in and the product out. Uh, the intersection at Double F and 29, I wrestled with the state of Wisconsin and this township for over a year to get a stoplight, uh, to get a, uh, street light there. Jeff Hughesby and myself ended up buying the street light, and after wrestling with the township, we finally got it in, and it's been a good addition because we have walking paths over there and everything else. When the intersection of the road was being done, I spent time calling some friends I thought I had at the DOT, and I begged them for a roundabout. I begged them for a stop sign. Nobody listened. Uh, as you can see, it did not happen. That intersection literally was improved, but it's not improved to the degree, as the one gentleman said, 20 trucks become 40, 30 trucks become 60. After hearing that presentation, you really are put in a box. Either you approve it or you disapprove it. You cannot do any adjusting. So my two minutes are up. Thank you for listening. God bless you, and I hope you make the right decision for all the people on Double F and in that area.
Thank you.
My name's, uh, Mike Gardner. I live in 2270 Greenwood Valley Drive, uh, in River Falls. I just wanna add on the traffic issue. In the document itself, it, it's very clear that the Petersons can use Highway 29. On page two, the Petersons make the statement that they would use Highway 29 during an emergency or unforeseen condition. On page seven, it says that the vehicles in excess of 30 trips per day going in to the site shall access for emergencies, and we moved over to Highway 29. With this type of, of unforeseen conditions and emergency, why don't we just face the fact that they could be using, uh, Double F as the emergency access and Highway 29 as the primer? The other thing is, I did some homework on noise abatement and noise control. I just wanna remind people that a diesel truck accelerating runs between 110 and 115 decibels. I wanna remind you, the car horn is about 110 decibels, and an ambulance siren, siren is 112. You're gonna have trucks making that amount of noise right in front of Comfort Homes from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Doesn't sound practical to me. Thank you for considering my, my concerns.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Jablonsky. I live at 2262 Greenwood Valley Drive, and as I listen to everybody, I noticed that the lady who presented the permit did not mention the hours. I noticed, and I read all 12 pages, just as Dick did, I noticed that normal hours were from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I don't know if I misread that, but I think of, we're located close to Comfort's Home, and I think of all the citizens that aren't up at 5:00 AM and are back in bed before 10:00 PM. So I objected not only to what I've already heard, but just to the hours. Just a passionate thing is that, do we all have to pay a price because we have a digester down the road? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Scott Erickson. I live at, uh, W-9974, State Highway 29 with my wife Kathy. So we're about, uh, just a quarter of a mile past the intersection that everybody's talking about right now. Uh, we've been at this location for over 30 years, you know, so we've got a lot at stake and very concerned about regarding this, uh, this digester. Uh, one of the things that, uh, you know, we get a whip of manure from the Peterson farm every now and then. It's part of life. We've lived there. It's part of, uh, loving the rural life, so it's never been an issue in the past. The other thing too is while I believe that renewable energy is a good thing, just as Dick Reinhardt had mentioned, I also believe that it takes, needs to take place in a way that doesn't harm others' interest. Uh, one of the things that came out in our township meeting when they had the, the public meeting is that the, um, after there are many concerned citizens raising concerns there, one of the board members or the, stated that people have a right to make a living. I think when you make a statement like that, there really should have been a caveat attached to that, and that it shouldn't come with harm or at the expense to others. I know that you've heard a lot of concern about the intersection of Double F and 29. I won't bore, or I won't, um, you know, pile onto that too far, but it really is a matter of the volume that goes in and out of there. I just heard that there'll be 20 to 25 trucks traveling there, but at the township meeting, Vanguard Renewables stated that there would be up to 30 trucks. So that's what we based our numbers in. 30 in means 30 out, that's 60 a day. It's 360 a week. It's over 18,000 encounters for the people that are on Double F over the course of a year. So that's significant traffic, uh, traffic flow. The other issue is that intersection itself, although the state improvements have helped with turn lanes, it still creates a real issue with visibility concerns. When you have a semi coming from the Prescott direction, taking a left down onto Double F, you're gonna start blocking the view of other people that are proceeding from south to north, and then you've got the crosswalk there. You could have a child on a bicycle trying to, uh, cut across that area or somebody walking, and it's just gonna take a tragic accident to happen. Okay, I guess in closing, I'll just say that it was poorly thought out, and I think that it's gonna cause more harm to the citizens than what the actual value is the way it's designed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Council. My name's Gabriel. I live on N-8491, uh, same Birch Cliff neighborhood. Actually, um, find it hard to believe that a lot of folks will be more affected by the traffic than myself and my family, who have, got four little kids with me here, um, and my wife. Uh, we live directly across from the Dog Park, um, literally right across the road. Um, I'm not gonna go into detail about the traffic because I think, uh, folks before me covered it pretty well. Um, I don't see a reason why there can't be, uh, another entrance to this, uh, you know, if it has to be this anaerobic digester off of South 29. Further concerns, you know, being with the Dog Park that is, that is right there, uh, where that entrance is going to be, you also have the, um, Kinnik Kinnik Preserve entrance, and I know that's used by the local schools as well. Um, and then obviously, I'm worried about my kids, um, being on the road with those large trucks. Um, furthermore, uh, this anaerobic digester, as folks mentioned before, it's, it's, it is great, uh, to look into renewable energy. Um, in, in this case, it's just, uh, I'm worried about emissions. Um, I know that there's, uh, gases, not only that, uh, are burned up by the engines creating this energy, but, uh, the emissions burned by those, by those engines, um, being in the atmosphere. Uh, hydrogen sulfide, for example, can be detected, uh, in the atmosphere at, you know, .47 parts per billion, um, and it doesn't really take much, uh, to, to have that smell, and I know, um, folks would rather not, uh, have, uh, extra gases in the atmosphere nearby. So I, I'd be, um, more interested, I guess, into exactly what the protocols are for monitoring, um, these emissions, uh, both, uh, via gases and as far as the solid waste as well, um, because we really value our community. I mean, that's why we moved here. We love this area. We wanna keep it clean.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Siri Smith. I live and farm in River Falls Township. In 122 years, my family has been operating our farm, the proposal for a manure digester at the Peterson Family Farm is the most progressive and timely project for this area, at the very least for the following reasons. It's located in the middle of a private farm, an A1 exclusive ag land in a farmland preservation area. That's how our township has that set up. The digester is a highly efficient and effective process. The digester will sequester and convert both liquid cow manure and organic food waste to capture the methane gas, which will be sold as organic natural gas, and provide a nutrient-rich organic fertilizer to replace the chemical fertilizer at the Peterson Farm. And to note, you should know that the food substances that go into this, the food substances create a much richer fertilizer than even the animal manure. The tremendous amount of industrial food waste is an often overlooked reality, but in fact, we have potent- But in fact, we have potential sources of it right here in River Falls. The breweries, a distillery, industrial bakery. You may have heard in, in other presentations from the company itself, that they had Coors waste, they had Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream. There are all sorts of things. And we, as people who are eating those and creating somewhat inventory waste because we are consumers, it's a reality around here. It's not foreign to us. The opportunity for a second use of food waste as natural gas or organic fertilizer is simply a very progressive and wise choice. The Wisconsin Department of Agriculture considers a digester an accessory farm use. Corn bins are, this is, machine sheds are. It's, it's not real different. For anyone in this room, city, township, or area, who truly cares about the Kinnick-Kinnick watershed, I actually live in the Kinnick-Kinnick watershed on the South Fork, this digester is an ecologically sound project. Please support it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Beisflug. I live on twenty-three twenty-seven Aurora Circle. I've lived here for seven years, and in the seven years that I've lived here, I love to have my windows open. But every spring and every fall, Peterson Farms trucks, tractors, combines run down Double FF. And the noise that comes out of there is so noisy that you can't hear yourself. If we're going to have this access off of Double FF and having that many more trucks coming through there on a daily basis, I won't be able to have my windows open, meaning I have to use my air conditioner. These will have to use more electricity. So where's it going? The other thing that was brought up here is the intersection of twenty-nine and FF. My wife and I walk that almost every day. And I know they put up a nice little yellow sign that says crosswalk. Do you know how many people stop there? Maybe one. You have to put your life in your hands going across that intersection. I ask that you do not support access on Double FF. I know the Peterson Family Farm has said it would be an inconvenience to them to have it come through twenty-nine. It's much more of an inconvenience to the people that live along Double FF in the city of River Falls. Thank you.
Thanks.
I am Carl Frank. I live right across from the dog park. I'm here on behalf of my parents that are gone. I support the Petersons big time. There won't be any more traffic that there is now. I see it every day. The dog park creates more traffic than you would believe. And they are there before sunlight and after sunlight. There are people there at three in the morning. Why? What the Kinnick Township or in the school forest has created more traffic past the house. And it is dangerous to walk across Double F. Yes, it is. But this traffic is not going to give any more traffic than what there is right now. So I support it one hundred percent, and I hope you guys both act on this and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is June Cicero. I live at twenty-three thirty-one Aurora Circle. Some of the materials that I got about this digester said that the primary access by using FF is preferred by the Peterson Family Real Estate in order to minimize disturbance to the farm's existing operations. Nobody asked me whether my existing operations were going to be impacted by the additional traffic on FF. Nobody asked me how I felt about this addition of trucks. Where my home is, I can reach out the window and touch FF from my bed. And now you're going to put as many as sixty truck trips in a day on FF, starting at five o'clock in the morning and going till ten o'clock at night. Because I'm retired, my work and what I do for the day is not impacted by that. But the Peterson Farm will now have the ability to continue their work. I don't deny that this digester is, is a great innovative thing. What I deny is that they had a farm and they decided to go into this business. If they didn't have room enough to access it from their property, why do we taxpayers are now in business, but we don't get a check from them? Because we're giving them FF to use instead of their own property and Highway twenty-nine? I think the impact on individual lives is as important as the impact on the farm. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Vesta. I live at N eight-one-three-four, ten fifteenth Street, so right off of Double F. My question to everybody is, with the truck traffic, what is that tiny little bridge that's at the base of the go-down the ravine and up the ravine? What is that rated for, for weight? When that thing went out and had to be redone years ago, we were out all summer. We had to drive Double F to Double Q to twenty-nine. It took twenty-five minutes to get back into River Falls because the little tiny bridge went out. Who pays for that little tiny bridge when thirty trucks going each way is going to collapse that bridge? And it's out again, and all the residents have to go all the way around and pay for that bridge. What is it rated for weight? No one has brought that up on Double F. What is that tiny little bridge that crosses that little Kenny branch, the Rocky Branch Creek? What is that rated for trucks? Anybody? If that collapses, we have no way to get out of our neighborhood except Double Q down to twenty-nine halfway to Prescott. So that's my, somebody needs to think about that. And twenty-nine's already there. There's no little bridge. So why not do twenty-nine if you're wanting this project? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Tom Kamalis. I live at W nine-nine-eight-five, County Road FF. So basically, I'm the very first home that you'll encounter with a driveway as you exit twenty-nine to go on Double FF. My concern is the traffic. Thirty trucks a day, sixty. If you do the math for seventeen hours, that's basically one every seventeen minutes. And it's been brought up with a good example with decibel noise. Living there for thirty-five years, I've seen the increase of traffic, which is natural, we're a growing area. But with semi-traffic going down there, it does get loud. And I'm just kind of curious why a proposal would try to encourage commercial traffic to go down a road where the city's built sidewalks, where we have a dog park, basically a pedestrian traffic. So the traffic is just going to naturally increase. One point that's not been brought up is that subdivision's increasing. So you're going to have additional cars coming from there as well, as Dick, you know, mentioned. That's, we've seen and heard many accidents in that area. And just getting onto twenty-nine for the Double F can be quite a bottleneck. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Amaro with Vanguard Renewables, the applicant along with the Peterson family for this project. Thank you to the council for hearing us tonight. Thank you for the community for coming up. Just want to go over a few things that, you know, we've heard tonight, just to respond to. Number one, the presence of an emergency flare. That's something that's going to be part of the project. It's there to burn off gas. It doesn't mean pipeline, pipeline quality, or in the event that we make too much gas that the pipeline couldn't handle. It's a flare that is in a shroud. The shroud's twenty-five feet tall, seven feet wide. And it's not an open flame that's visible for miles away or large. It's, it's all self-contained in that, in this shroud. Emissions is also a concern, of course. This project is a biodigester project that creates biogas, that's upgraded the pipeline quality, and that's directly injected into the pipeline. We're not spinning a generator onsite or burning that gas onsite to make electricity. This is going right into the pipeline nearby. We're currently permitting with the state as a registration B for their air permit, and we received approval on that for a similar project on the other side of the state needed just last month. And we would expect the same approvals here. It's the same project essentially. Odors, a lot of those odor-causing methanogens get burnt up into the digester as part of the gas-making process. So when this material is land-applied twice a year, odor impacts go down significantly. Also during food deliveries, liquid food waste that comes into the facility is received under negative pressure. That pressure is, that air is funneled out to a carbon filtration unit. That's the same air handler that services the building, which is also under negative pressure. That's on twenty-four-seven, twenty-four-seven, excuse me, cycling air six times an hour. And that's cleaned twice a year. The final concern is obviously traffic, which everyone has voiced their opinions about. Certainly a concern of ours, and we've thought about it every step of the way when we started developing this project over a year ago with the Peterson family. The access to Double F is existing. We are widening it to support two-way traffic and also paving the entryway to meet city specs as it meets the Double F and also paving the thirteen-hundred or so feet along the dog park to minimize dust in the area. Access from twenty-nine, inconvenience has been thrown around a lot tonight and totally understood, but it's more of an infeasibility. Route twenty-nine and the dairy to remove productive farmland for the addition of a road and then cross the stream onsite did not seem feasible or reasonable to do that. Accessing the farm's existing dairy operations, it's not just a matter of being in the way. The Petersons have a huge investment with their lagoons onsite, their bins, their dryers. To move those in order for trucks to pass would make that just infeasible to proceed as a project. The thirty trucks per day is a max. We don't think we would hit that. I know it's hard to quantify here tonight, but that is based on our other operating facilities in New England and the projects that we have under construction around the country. We believe that we're going to be targeting twenty to twenty-five trucks per day. And then access via twenty-nine would just be, like we said, an emergency. If it's a gigantic snowstorm and that access to Double F is not plowable, either we would shut down for the day and not take food deliveries, or if we had a customer or a client that needed to dispose of their food waste that day, we would ask the Petersons for access via the main entrance. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thanks.
I live in Lakeville, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you. My name is Samantha Bloom, and I live at W nine-nine-nine-seven, County Road FF, which is the second house off of twenty-nine. And what I've heard tonight is that it does sound like a progressive economic issue. And there's really, they get to do what they want with their property. That's really not the concern here. It's the, the noise, it's the increased traffic. It is the, the traffic patterns. It is the, there's many reasons why this needs to be known. The economic impact is for them. It should not be put onto the citizens of County Road FF and in that neighborhood because it's not feasible or economically feasible for the Peterson Farm or for Vanguard. So respectfully, I think it is progressive. We support the project, just not the traffic and the, the hours from five AM to ten PM. It's extremely disruptive, and that's a truck every seventeen minutes. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm speaking for myself as a, as a citizen of the town of River Falls, also on the Town Plan Commission and attending the ETZ Commission. Both of those groups have passed this unanimously. They looked at the issues. Yes, there will be more traffic on County Double F. But right now, the traffic on Double F is about five hundred cars a day. On Highway twenty-nine, it's about three thousand cars a day. So you're talking one-sixth the traffic on Double F. We have good turn lanes on Double F and twenty-nine now, so they're safe thanks to my friend Dick Reinhardt and the others who worked for that. I go through that intersection more than once a day, unfortunately. And I feel that the trucks turning on that intersection are far better off than they would be down on Highway twenty-nine where there is no room at the Peterson Farm for turn lanes. The bridge is right there on Rocky Branch, Rocky Creek, and turn lanes just won't work. There's not enough room for them. You talked about being the convenience of the Peterson family. No, it's not the convenience. It's the way the low Highway twenty-nine is laid out, and it has to be that way because of the interference of that, of the bridge. And unless someone is willing to produce the million or two million dollars for a wider, bigger bridge and buy the right of way, that's not going to happen. So I would ask you to follow the wisdom of the Town Plan Commission and the ETZ Committee in this regard. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jerome, you don't have to state your name for the record. Please. I know who you are, but can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jerome Rogwald. Try that again, Scott.
I was thinking about the poor people at Comfort's Home. Let's see.
Let's see, you get up in the morning, you milk the cows. It ought to be about 5:00 o'clock, wouldn't you say? So why not dump that on them, too? They go in there to retire. They can't retire because they're going to have traffic keeping them up. Then I thought, today, why don't I look at the EPA statement on this move? I couldn't find it. So then I thought, well, I'm going to go do some research on these digesters. So I did. I looked up how many states have these digesters, and there's a lot of them. It's a great idea. I also read one today that stated how dangerous it is for electricity and methane. So I thought, well, this would be pretty good. If there's an explosion, we can always sell tickets to the explosion. Then I thought about Petersons. Who's the only one going to gain from this as a Peterson? And FF, the poor road suffers now, and when the snowplows come, we have to, they resurface it. I don't resurface it. City has to resurface it. But what is the danger to all these people that bike? I have neighbors that ride on FF every day. One of them is a disabled vet. I guess his life will just have to change. So will the people at Comfort's Home. So will everybody living in our little FF area because Petersons want this great idea. So I'm just thinking, and you can't time me because you gave four minutes to that guy. But anyway, so I was thinking, what do we need to do here? And 29 is a great alternative. We get the digester, they stay on 29, they stay off of FF. People that bike don't have trouble. People that go fishing, fly-fishing, won't have trouble with all these trucks. There won't be the pollution from the trucks, because no one has brought that up yet, the pollution from the trucks. And how much do these trucks weigh? How many tons? Don't you believe that they're going to have an effect on our road, FF? Whereas 29 is maintained a lot better than FF, hate to say. So my question is, why can't they leave it on 29? The Petersons are up at 5:00, have then listened to the trucks and not us. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Could you state your name?
Oh, Ron Helmanek at 301 Steelhead Drive. And I do live in River Falls. And I do live off of FF. Thank you. Anybody else have anything on this? Yep.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brooke. Heard from my husband. I'll make this very brief. I was not able to attend all of the other meetings. I recently had a baby, about two months ago. We have four young children. We homeschool, and we're outside all day. And we absolutely love this area. We attend all the events. We do all of the things that make this area so great. I know that you've heard back and forth, back and forth on like the trucks and everything that's been going on. For me, it comes down to, do I sit outside and do I fear for my kids as trucks barrel down this road? Because no matter what the sign says, every day, I'm sitting there. We have a cute little bench. We have a garden. It's great. My kids love it. And trucks go 60, 70 miles down this road every single day. And I'm thinking, okay, well, you just add a few more trucks. Like, what's the big deal? I'm totally progressive. You know, I think that the anaerobic digester could be a really positive thing for the community. You know, listening to the woman who's very passionate about all the things that's positive is really great. But all I keep thinking about is, my kids can't bike now. Like, they will not be able to bike from my house to any of the events. They can't bike to the park. There's no sidewalk. People walk their dogs from the community up to the dog park. People won't be able to do that anymore. I know that it just sounds like an inconvenience to move it to 29, but really, for people who are so passionate about it, myself included, it's more than inconvenience. It keeps us awake at night. The thought of these trucks, the thought of all this traffic, the thought of maintaining this bridge, the thought of all of these things. I mean, the fact that I wasn't told about any of this. There was no flyer. There was nothing. My house is directly across. I can see the road on FF. I could walk there. It's across the road. I didn't get any information, and when I called, they told me, oh, well, we posted it in the journal. Okay, well, I don't get the journal. I'm a 31-year-old with four little kids. I'm not going to read the journal. I'm sorry. I don't have time. And then I asked, can I get information on it? And he said, sure, we'll mail it to you. Nothing in the mail came. Then I had to call, and they sent me PowerPoints, which were vague because they're just talking points. They're not actual information, because whoever delivered the PowerPoint probably filled it in. I just feel like none of us were given any time and information to make a sound opinion on the matter. And so that's all I have to say. I appreciate all your guys' time. I appreciate everyone who came out today to speak up on this because it is really a big issue, especially for people who have very young children. I want to live here for many, many more years. I want to see my kids grow up here. And I, anyway, I appreciate your time. So thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything?
Hi. Steve Slubicki, N-8110, 1015. And I'm just here to reiterate what everybody's, most of everybody's been saying, that we are very disappointed in the lack of information that we were given. Not everybody has access to the journal. We used to get the River Falls Daily Paper. Typically, you read up and make sure, but I'm wondering why that it wasn't decided to send out a mailing to the residents that could be affected by this. It's not difficult. We get updates from high school. We get updates about the school forest, but we didn't receive any information on this. And I think that's why you're seeing a full house tonight and not at the other meetings. And I don't think anybody's here to begrudge the Petersons and the digesters. What we're very concerned about is the traffic on Double F. And since you can, in an emergency situation, run trucks out onto Highway 29, why can't we do that as the standard, as the norm? Okay? And that's pretty much all I have to say, and that we're proud residents of the township, and we're very disappointed in the communication that was given for this project. Okay?
Thank you.
One other question. Is there a timeline for when this project, if it is approved, how long is it going to take to put into place?
Do you have the answer?
Typical project. One year into full operation. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is, excuse me, Mark Johnson. I live at 2225 Greenwood Valley Drive. We've lived there for 30 years. We were living there before Greenwood Valley Drive existed. At that time, we used an easement road that went directly out onto Double F, about, well, right next to the Comforts of Home there. Before Greenwood Valley Drive was built, that was how we got in and out of our property on Double F. And the traffic back then was, this was before 2007, I believe, 2006, the traffic on Double F then was quite a bit less than it is today. And as you know, there's a lot of development going on around. It's only going to get worse. And so if you approve it today based on the statistics that you have, it's not assured that that will be valid in the future. So I encourage you to not approve this project unless it is decided that the main route in and out will be on Highway 29 and that County Road Double F would be the emergency way in and out. I agree with the woman who said, I don't think that what's inconvenient for the farm there should be the deciding factor on how this is approved because using Double F is inconvenient for a lot more people. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Mark Anderson again. They're talking about accessing 29 into Peterson property. They're talking about turn lanes. Ever heard about roundabouts? It would probably be a much better way of getting trucks in and out of there and keep the speed down along 29 there. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Hi, my name's Deb Schrettenthaler. I live at W-10055, County Road Double F, and I'm at the top of the hill before the bridge. I agree also with everyone else who's stated here. If you do approve this, I would really like to invite every one of you on my daily walk. And I want one person on one side of the bridge and the other on the other. So when two semis cross, you might as well just jump over the sides because it is daily walked by multiple people and bicycles. And my biggest concern is the inexperienced drivers pulling out of driveways. Every driveway along that road to the Peterson access is obstructed. I have a hard time pulling out of my driveway now, looking right and left because both sides are obstructed. So if you approve it, please come on a furlough with me.
Thanks. Is that everybody then? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Move on to request for a combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for River Falls Golf Club Incorporated, N-7901, County Road W. And we're here again. We're moving to a public hearing. And if there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about that, this will be the thing. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this one.
So moved.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, is Anthony Bloom, the registered agent here? Excellent.
Anthony Bloom, N-7901, County Road W in the township.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You're inviting me.
I, I've been the designated person to ask the three questions. We ask of every, every agent. Do you have your responsible service certificate?
I do.
And do you understand the role of an agent?
I do.
And you understand that if there's a violation, even if you're not there, you are responsible?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a conflict of interest with my daytime job and Mr. Bloom, so I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay. So we've got a first and a second on this. Does anybody else have anything on this?
I just wanted to ask if he's going to have any special events, as far as like, what do they do and they're planning to do?
Great question. Yeah, operation intent for ourselves is to continue to run as a golf course and then to expand the event utilization of the facility, that be for weddings as well as other uses for the township and the city. So we're currently carving that out, but yes, we will have a next.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First one is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of River Falls and River Falls Civic Library. Next one is a resolution accepting public improvements for Wason Townhomes. Next one is a resolution, is a motion to cancel the August 13, 2024 regular city council meeting due to the conflict with the partisan primary election. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent, of the consent agenda.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is a resolution appointing election inspectors for the 2024, 2025 election cycle.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Oh, I think I need to abstain since I'm on the list.
Okay. Yep, that'd be good. Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so this is, next one is a resolution authorizing request for qualification process. This is for legal services. This resolution approves a legal service request for qualification process. I need a first and a second to approve a resolution, and then I will appoint a council member to this committee.
I saw move.
Second. Okay, first and second. Do you want me to appoint somebody before, so they're part of the vote, or does it?
I think that's the mayor's prerogative, if you want to do that.
Well, let's just vote on this first. So any other, any questions on the resolution? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then Diane, since you're the comptroller?
I'd be happy.
And you're already doing this, and you're, you're council, you're, got the acknowledge. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I'll appoint Ms. Odean to this. Okay, next we move on to administrator's report.
Mayor and council, tonight's the last council meeting of the year. The next council meeting is not until January 9, 2024. City hall offices are closed December 25th, 26th, and January 1st. As you know, we are not closed, just the offices are. We're 365, 24/7 operations. So we appreciate the city staff will be working on those days. Earlier this year, the council requested an update on main and division intersection, so I want to provide that. The project was completed August 31st. There was no uptick in accidents involving the intersection improvements and no major traffic issues. We did observe westbound traffic on Division Street queued longer, particularly during the evening rush hour. And the trial ballers were removed on November 6th. Other than that, if I happen to take any questions?
Anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, move on to announcements. I got a couple appointments I need to make. The municipal board of canvassers, the municipal board of canvassers consists of the municipal clerk along with two qualified electors of the municipality approved by the clerk. The MBOC makes the official determination at the outcome of the election for municipal contests and processes and counts eligible provisional ballots. The term shall be two years commencing on January 1 of each even-numbered year. I'd like to appoint David Iyers and Derek Falkowski to the MBOC through December 31, 2025. And also, the next one is the municipal board of, well, you guys want to vote on one at a time?
Sure.
Are you all okay, are you all okay all at once?
Let's take it all at once.
So the municipal board of absentee ballot canvassers, the MBAC. Creating the MBAC, the MBAC consists of the municipal clerk or designee along with two qualified electors of the municipality approved by the clerk. The MBAC is responsible for reconciling absentee votes cast in each election. The term shall be two years commencing on January 1 of each even-numbered year. I'd like to appoint Angie, I'd like to appoint Angie Bond, Carrie Schreiner, and Melissa Johnson to the MBAC through December 31 of 2025. And last thing is, I'd like to reappoint Terry McKay through December of 2025 on the bid board. Or I'm sorry, 26th, and reappointment of Vince Seedling through December of 2026 to the bid board.
I make a motion. We accept the mayor's appointments.
Second.
First and second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move to adjourn.
Before, excuse me, before the council does that, can I have one moment?
Yep.
To confer with staff?
Yes. You can have two if you need it. You can have two if you need it.
Your thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can you oblige me to?
Yep.
So I'll just provide, I don't know if people are waiting for explanation as to what did or did not happen. So I'll try to provide one. So the council did not, there was, the action failed for a lack of motion. That doesn't necessarily mean that the permit was denied. So we will have to do some additional consideration with the applicant to determine what next steps would be. But because the council did not, there was, it died for lack of action. There was no motion or second. So there was no approval. There was also no denial. So staff will be in touch with the applicant. We'll review this, this, the ordinance and the statute. I guess for additional clarification for the audience, which I think they may be aware of, the city of River Falls is restricted by action of the state legislature, which this editorial from me intentionally meant to handicap city governments from denying special use permits. So there is some presumption of private property rights that was intended in the legislature. So the choices of the city council are limited based strictly on state law and the application. So we will endeavor to do our job as staff to provide additional information to council regarding what the next steps were. But, but there was no motion, which means there was no action on the item. So the, obviously, the action was the council received all of the public hearing and that's part of the public record. And that will be considered in future steps to determine how we go next.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask staff question? Yeah. So effectively, has it been tabled? I mean, is it the same thing as a table?
It is not the same as a table.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to know.
Effectively, it's been tossed back in staff's lap. So I think that's the practical impact is now. Now the city minister will be working with the city attorney to determine what, what you did.
Correct. It wasn't tabled, so you don't have to take it off the table. It's just no action was taken, so it would have to be put back on the agenda at some point, perhaps.
It's likely to be back on an agenda based on our current reading of the state statutes and ordinances related to special use permits. It's possible that there's a different legal determination between now and then and that we don't think it comes back to council. But I think it's likely that it'll come back in some form based on our current understanding of the state law.
I just have a quick question. If there, is there a way for us to, to address the concerns of the people that were here tonight? Or does that have to go back through the entire process that started over a year ago?
Yeah, unfortunately, the way the law is written in the city's extraterritorial zoning ordinance doesn't allow for changes to the recommendation by the ETZ Committee. State law also requires cities approve special use permits if the applicant can show by substantial evidence that they will meet the conditions imposed. So we'll have to get back to you, but it's difficult.
I guess I have a question then, based on as long as this has become like a seminar, which is, so if a representative's on council, we're obviously, excuse me. We're not, we're not over the town, right? We are the city of River Falls. It's important for all you town people to recognize that. But when this comes back to us, if it comes back to us, do we have the ability to vote no because we vote no?
So let's not go back to the agenda item that you've, you chose not to act on.
Okay, fair enough.
Let's not move too far afield. The staff will be in touch with your options.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got a first and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Because nobody, nobody made a motion to put it on. So we, we're, we've got a first and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have adjourned.